Welcome everyone, this is a meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Today is Tuesday, September 26th, it is 5:00 PM. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. In two liberal republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, first order of business gentlemen, we have some minutes on there, but I've asked for the postponement of those minutes. So I'm just gonna pass over that.
True.
The first real order of business here is, we have Mr. Robert S. Como in the audience. It is a distinct honor to be in the room with a World War II veteran. To give everybody a little history, Mr. Robert S. Como served our country during World War II from the years 1945 to 1947. During his time overseas, he served in the US Army. Mr. Como was stationed in Frankfurt, Germany, where at the time that was considered as center of turmoil. After serving overseas, he served our community as a committee member of the Akushnet Elementary School Building Committee. This monumental project was completed in 1972. Remarkably, Mr. Como just turned 96 years old and completed the New England Honor Flight. Mr. Como traveled all the way to our nation's capital, honored those who served, and flew back home, all in one day. Mr. Como, it's an absolute honor to be in your presence tonight. Mr. Wonar has a citation on behalf of the Board of Selectmen he'd like to read to you.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hinckley, this is a real honor for me, because I grew up on the same street as Mr. Como. Who, as I understand it, right, Mr. Como, you were a mason and had the absolute most beautiful house on Ludlow Street. All due respect to those who lived on Ludlow Street, and to my grandfather who built his house, Mrs. Hayes, Mrs. Piché. But Mr. Como's home always, always stood out, and you could tell the precision in the amount of work and attention to detail. But again, just honored to be in your presence tonight. I just remember the stories of you and Mr. Rooney talking about your involvement with the school and the construction of the school, which was awesome. So I would like to read the citation on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. Be it known that the Akushnet Board of Selectmen hereby extends its sincerest appreciation to Robert S. Como, Second World War Army veteran. The Board of Selectmen acknowledges his civic engagement in the example he has consistently modeled to all our citizens by championing a better world for this country and his community. Furthermore, our congratulations extend to completing the New England Honor Flight. Our appreciation extends to the contributions that you made by serving on the Akushnet Elementary School Building Committee, awarded this day, September 26th, 2023. Mr. Gaspar, Mr. Hinckley, and myself, thank you, Mr. Como.
There you go. You want to...
We got one more tour and duty for you if you...
Come on up. You want to hold that in front of you?
You can take a photo.
Come right over here with us and take a photo.
Come on in.
Come on in. You turn that around like this.
Hey, go Dad.
Like that, so that we can get a nice photo, Mr. Hinckley, come on in.
Right in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Absolutely right.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Happy belated birthday as well.
All the best.
How cool is that, huh? How often do we get to do that?
We might end up giving him the Golden Kane Award probably the next few weeks too.
So I'm gonna take the meeting a little bit out of order. We do have State Rep. Paul Schmidt in the audience. The Town Administrator's report, I'm gonna move up to address something that came up at last minute under the Town Administrator's report involving Rup Schmidt.
Mr. Chairman, before we get to that, just a quick note that the Selco case has been dismissed. You've got the documents in your packet. That's a longstanding case concerning federal court. And also, the natural disaster recovery program with the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources. I couldn't do justice to describing it when we have the Chairman of this Legislature's Agricultural Committee here. So I would bow to Representative Schmidt to please brief the Board on this, because he is the expert.
Thank you Administrator Kelly, and I just want to say it's an honor to be in the room with a member of the Greatest Generation. Thank you for your service. And thank you Chairman Wonar, Mr. Hinckley, I mean Chairman Gaspar, Mr. Hinckley, Mr. Wonar for putting me on. And I know you share my support for farmers in Akushnet.
Absolutely.
And that is why the Legislature enacted a natural disaster recovery program totaling $20 million for farmers. And it refers to any farmers affected by the freeze in February, the snap freeze in February, or the freeze in May. This particularly references fruit farmers, which is why I'm here. And this program will cover a portion of their losses. The program however, does close this Friday, and that's why I'm here, just to remind all the farmers in Akushnet about this program. If you don't know about it, log on to the MDR, Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, website. You'll see the natural disaster recovery program. And it gives you all the information you need to fill out the form. Again, you have to fill that out by 4:00 PM on Friday.
Thank you.
And I thank you very much for...
Thank you, Rup Schmidt.
Again, I thank you for all your support of the farming community here in Akushnet.
Have you posted that on your own, like, I know you have an active Facebook page. If you posted it anywhere that maybe, Bob, you could repost it on All Things Akushnet or send it out to the act community?
We'd be very happy to do that.
Okay, great.
Yep. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. The next order of business we have is Kevin McHugh, the annual MS4 report. Mr. McHugh?
How are you, sir? I'm good, how are you? Good evening.
Very good.
So, as I'm sure you're aware, we had prepared an annual report for the town stormwater program. So that's part of the MS4 program with the EPA MS4 program that most of the cities and towns in Massachusetts are required to comply with. This program, this permit period started in 2017. So we were recently brought on board late May of this year, just to make sure that the town stays, gets in compliance and stays in compliance with all those requirements. One of those requirements being that annual report be submitted. It's actually due Thursday of this week. So the permit, the annual permit that you have in front of you now, that covers the period actually from July 30th of last year till June 30th of this year. During that period, there wasn't a significant amount of work done by the town. And you'll see in that report, we're listing out a bunch of activities that will be done over this next year to make sure that the town gets in compliance and stays in compliance. So those are all covered in that annual report. All that really needs to be done is a member of the Board of Selectmen just need to sign that annual report. And then I can submit it for you, or it can be submitted just through email to both DEP and EPA. Most recently, some of the activities that we've done with, working with the Conservation Agent is, and you may see them, I'm not sure if they've been distributed yet or not. It's a number of public education pamphlets, documents we've put together. There's also some public education information that will be posted to the town website. I don't know if that's gone up yet, but it'll go up soon.
Yep, I know it's in process, and I know that the flyer hasn't been distributed out.
Great. But through the next year, there's gonna be a lot of activity going on in the next year, just to make sure the town stays in compliance, so.
Well, we're glad to have you onboard to help us out with the MS4 reporting, because it's not an easy task.
It's a lot of work to do, but it's important.
Correct, so.
So, do you have any questions or anything you want to go over?
No, I don't. I know a little bit about it, but I don't want to bore everybody that's in the audience in the TV land, so I just, I know that we have some catching up to do, right?
Yep.
And that's why we appropriated with, along with town meeting members, that we appropriated some funding to have somebody like you onboard and guide us through this process. I've been notified and I've contacted DEP in the past about our MS4 reporting. And the last thing we want to do is be penalized by them.
Exactly.
So it's nice to have somebody like yourself onboard to help us out and get us through this process, because it's kind of long and tedious and it's kind of outside of, you know, our payroll, right? It's above my pay grade to figure all of this stuff out, like most of us, and we've had different people in place doing these kind of things. So it's nice to have you onboard to help us out as a community to get in compliance and stay in compliance.
That's my pleasure.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll entertain a motion to move and approve and submit the annual MS4 report on behalf of the town of Akushnet.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. What we'll do is whatever I need to sign, I guess, I'll sign off on it, or Mr. Kelly will send it over to you, and if you want to submit on behalf of the town.
Definitely.
All right, thank you.
Put it at that line, so.
I'll get it done tonight with him and sign off whatever, he'll submit it to you tomorrow, okay?
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, mate.
Congratulations.
All right, next we have Mr. Menad, should be here, I thought I seen him, I do see him, Mr. Menad, welcome. Snowplow drivers discussing rates and what we want to do. I know it's early in the calendar year, Dan, but you know, we'd rather get the message out early before everybody else starts grabbing folks from last year. You did a good job last year, I think we got, what, 18 subcontractors roughly?
No, we had like, I think, 21 last year.
21 subcontractors last year, so even better compared to what we had the previous year. So I think it's important that we get this on the agenda, give you some guidance on what the Board plans on doing. You can communicate that message out to hopefully those 21 again, and hopefully all 21, maybe more will come back. Who knows what this snow year is gonna look like, but we'd rather be proactive than reactive. So with that, I'll let you just talk about some rates, the new rates for Mass DOT.
I don't know if you guys got that?
Yeah, we have that sheet.
Yep. So actually, that's, you know, because we always go over, you know, for Mass Highway rates. And last year, we had additional five on top of this rate, so I don't know if that's still the same thing this year, if everybody's still willing to do that.
Yep, so Dan, on the, it's got an hourly base rate, and then the state does an early signup bonus of an additional 5.50.
Correct.
And then that brings it, I'm gonna go on the lowest one, right? The, you know, 8,599, the first category?
Yep.
So we'll just talk about that, because everything else sets precedence from there. The 9,536, is that what we did last year? We went off that number, or the base rate, the 89?
We go off the base rate and we added the five additional dollars.
So basically, we're doing the same thing minus the 50 cents, right? So we're ending up where they go a total with signup bonus from the 89, 86 to 95, 36, minus the 50 cents, so we're just gonna add that?
Correct. That's what we've been doing in the past.
And it worked, so we'll stick with the same $5 above that base rate?
Yep. This year, this is, and actually, Mass Highway from their rates from last year, it's a 4% increase from last year on every step. They went 4%.
A 10% increase in gasoline cost. You know, what do you do?
They went additional 4% this year, and we just, again, we usually match what they come out with.
Plus the five bucks.
Yep. So that covers kind of the assign on bonus, so we're kind of pretty much similar.
Yep.
For what the state does.
So with that, I guess this, last year we did a $1,000 sign-on bonus, right?
Well, it was pretty much a year-end bonus type of thing.
Perfect attendance.
Yeah, we didn't have that.
Which last year, we had one storm for like four hours, I think they came out, whatever it may be, but an agreement was an agreement, and we've upheld, you know, we kept that agreement.
Correct. I think we had a few didn't show up last year, but I mean, it is what it is, so.
Right. That's what happens, but it's perfect attendance again, same thing, if that's what your recommendation would be, I think the...
I know, I know one thing was a little hard time, I mean, if, one thing we probably should discuss, like, if somebody has a vacation planned, I don't know if you want to, you know, penalize them. If, you know, they have a vacation planned in January, say, and then it happens to be a storm when they're on vacation. I mean, it's technically not showing up, that you kind of go on vacation, they would have been there, but, you know, instead of them having to...
How do we know, so the difficulty?
Well, they would have to let me know, usually they would do let me know in the beginning of the season, that hey, I'm off January, because they do, the plow drivers had told me, hey, I'm going on vacation January 20th through the 25th, you know what I mean, whatever.
So if you can, if you can bring that back, you know, if you want to bring that back to the Board, and if that's gonna be the case, I guess I'd be okay with that concept. But I would want that vacation schedule with all the drivers that sign up.
Yep.
I would want that early in the season, so that it's not left for somebody to say, hey, you know, I'm taking, you know, I was on vacation, and you still get a $1,000 sign-on bonus. So if that list is provided, maybe, maybe, I mean, I'm open to that, but it's gotta be done early in the season before the snow starts falling, right?
Well, I have had people, don't get me wrong, he told me at the beginning of the season, but, you know, we were fortunate, it wasn't a snowstorm on that day anyways.
Right, there was a lot of reoccurring snowstorms where we would have been hit with that situation, right? It was a one, one time that Selectmen won.
No, I'm just, I'm not trying to be like a stickler, right? But if we're, if you know that you're a snowplow person, and you want perfect attendance, right? You'd be like, I'm a grass cutter, and I want perfect attendance in the summer, but I go on vacation in the summer, like, you know what I'm saying? I don't know, I'm just trying to get my head around the fact, like, if you want to be eligible for a $1,000 bonus, then the best way to ensure that is to be available, right? Like, again, I'm not trying to be, you know, a luck buster, but it's like, all right, you know, either you want to be perfect attendance? If not, you want to go on vacation, then you don't get $1,000 for perfect attendance.
I mean, again, it is what it is, but it's hard enough getting guys already as it is.
Understood.
It is.
I, yeah, yeah. It's just, it makes it pro, I don't know, if somebody's going on vacation, then you say, all right, you know, $500 or something, and you get a little kicker, but... Mr. Kelly, you have something?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Mr. Menad the process. When there's a snowstorm, do you call the drivers in? Do you let them know that the contractual snow drivers have to come in?
Correct.
And do you call them all in for each snowstorm?
Correct.
So if you know that someone's on vacation, you wouldn't be calling them in?
Correct.
So...
But again, this is, this is...
Would it be, would it be perfect attendance when called in?
I mean, look, we need people available, right? I mean, I'd be open to an early sign-on, like, for someone who's got a vacation, like, an early sign-on bonus, and they get a little extra, like, I'd be up to that. But I'm just having my hard time awarding a perfect attendance bonus for somebody, people who are booking vacations during the time when we most likely need them. That's all. I mean, again, I'm not trying to give people a hard time here, but it's like, you know, the person who's available all the time.
You know, you're figuring, like, a lot of people that snowplow, that ain't, that's what they do for a living, they don't just snowplow, that ain't, you know what I mean? Yeah, no, I get it. Way into life, and you gotta, you know, it is what it is.
It falls back to the same thing about a town employee, right? They have, we've been through this topic too, right? You try to stop somebody from taking vacation, what am I gonna do? And I was in disagreement back then, when we said, you know, you have a DPW worker that has a planned vacation, and him and his, him and his wife plan a vacation, or they plan a vacation in September or February. What are you gonna do, say, oh, oh, there's a snowstorm coming, you can't go on vacation? I don't think that's fair to an individual that works for us and our staff. So it's kind of fallen in the same thing. I think that we would need to see, so we're doing this really early, and I think it's good that we're doing this really early, but as fast as you can get people signed up from, like, the list off previous year. I think it's, you know, we're at the end of September, so mid-October, whatever, November 1st, we get a list in and say, okay, we know what people's vacation, and we have that list, so that, you know, if Dan's taking off something in February, but he's gonna say, oh, he was taking vacation and that snowstorm came in December, you're out. Perfect attendance is out, right? And we have something to go off of that way? I think that's a little bit more compatible, I, you know, and we gotta make sure that you don't have, you know, five drivers taking the same week off. Same thing with our internal staff, right? We would never do that. You would never, you would never, as a department, allow two or three of your guys to go on vacation the same work week, right? Even in normal circumstances, you can't afford to do that, you only have five in the DPW, right? So it's not something we would allow to be done, Mr. Hinckley.
I agree, I think the biggest thing is, I think we should put a date, an official date together. This is, like you said, November 1st, that's the list. Anybody that's hired has their vacation time listed by then, and at least this way we can...
Most of them are, and you definitely gotta know when you're...
You're going on vacation by that point, you know, so. You usually, you know, you're going on vacation two to three months in advance, that's the moral of the story, right? I mean, anything other than that, you're paying so much for flights and everything else. I've traveled a lot, you know, flights you're booking is usually six months in advance, when you get a better deal than within the last three months of when you're, when you're doing something, last-minute kind of travel. Sometimes you get better deals, but very rarely, so. And anybody that would come on after you provide that list, if you had 15 people, Dan, you had five new people, as they come in, you would have to have that and add it to the list, and we could hold that and file here. So that we know exactly what's going on, and there's no question in the future of whether or not somebody had that vacation time or not. That's how, you know, I think it's best served the public, and in the interest of our residents. The last thing I want to do is get caught with a, you know, that one time you have a blizzard, I mean, you don't have enough people out there helping you do things. And I remember back in 2000, I think it was 15, we lost Bow Drive, right? And when I say to the people at home that are watching this, when you lose a road, it's, snow comes, falls two or three inches, it freezes hard. You get two or three more inches after 12 hours or whatever, and that freezes hard, and that's what we call losing a road, where it's just, you can't plow it anymore, because it's solid ice. And I think it was Bow Drive at that point, where we lost a section of that road, and then unfortunately, after that big storm, you had to call in certain individuals would load us and stop busting that stuff up with big heavy equipment, so, just to clear that road. And it was a disaster, I drove over it, so I witnessed that with my own two eyes, and that's why, you know, the importance of this is, is great to me, in making sure we keep our roads clear and safe in case we need emergency personnel to get down those roads. So if you can figure that out, and you can work it out with our subcontractors, and get some kind of list put together by November 1st, the Board will review this again. But for right now, is the Board okay with doing the $5 above the Mass DOT base rate and the $1,000 sign-on bonus for perfect attendance?
Yeah, absolutely.
Motion.
So I would just make, entertain a motion to approve the offering and incentive of $5 above the Mass DOT base rate for perfect attendance for contractual snowplow drivers with a $1,000 sign-on bonus.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Is it a sign, signing bonus or perfect attendance?
It's a perfect attendance, so it'll be paid for at the end of the year. Thanks, Dan.
I don't think there's anything else for you, big guy.
Thanks, Nick.
All right, no, good day.
Thank you. That's it, thank you, sir.
We let you off easy today.
All right. Next, we have the appointment of a new town accountant, Nick Monticello. Nick is a, our assistant town accountant currently. Nick has done a phenomenal job when he was appointed to the assistant town accountant position, and he's played many other roles in the meantime. He is an extremely dedicated employee of the town of Akushnet. We have a lot of those dedicated employees in the town of Akushnet, but Nick, you're a stand-up guy. It's a pleasure to have you move up in this role of the town accountant. I don't know what more to say, I mean, you know, we brought in a consultant for, what is it, Jamie, a year and a half, two years now?
About a year and a half.
About a year and a half. Mr. Hasset, you've had the ability to work alongside of him, an extremely intelligent man, taught you a lot over that last year and a half. I know I've spent some time with you folks upstairs. You're lucky to have that individual, Mr. Hasset, as a mentor. Mr., he wrote us a letter last time, saying that he would be able to continue, but just not at the capacity that he's currently at. So with that, you have anything you'd like to say to the Board?
Just want to thank the Board for the opportunity, and I look forward to working with everyone, and continue to work as hard as I do to get everything done.
All right.
Glad to have you, Nick.
Is there a motion to appoint?
I move to appoint Nicholas Monticello to the position of town accountant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Well deserved, Nick. Keep up the great work. All right. Next, we have Verizon, we got poles, permits. Is there anybody from Verizon? Nobody from Verizon here. So the reason why this is being put on the agenda is, it's been a lot of conversations, I've had several with different residents in the community, concerns about poles being put in the center lines of their properties. You know, unfortunately, a lot of people don't know this, but I want to make this known to everybody at home, that as long as those poles, most poles in the town of Akushnet are owned by Verizon, not Eversource, first and foremost. So most pole placements will be done from Verizon and not from Eversource. Any pole change from a pole location to a new location requires Verizon to have a public hearing in front of the Board of Selectmen for a pole location, a new pole location. So anybody that's out there in TV land, or perhaps here in the audience, I do want you to know this. That pole location, just because they stuck a stake in the center line of your front yard, doesn't necessarily mean that that's where that pole's gonna go. It's gonna come in front of this Board, they have to notify the abudders, they have to come in front of this Board in a public hearing, and we have to approve that new pole location. So it's not just, you know, we see people invest, and it kills me, I wish Verizon was here so we could talk to them, that they just, people start showing up with colored vests on and sticking stakes through people's front yards, and there's a lot of confusion out there in the public. No fault of anybody of our residents at all, I mean, it's understood, you don't know the process, I get it. But it's just, it's getting to a point with Verizon and people showing up in neighbors' yards and punching stakes in it, just saying, yep, that's where the new pole's going, and see you later, have a nice day. That's not the case. If there's a new pole location, and it has to come in front of this Board in a public hearing, the abudders are notified, and those residents that have that proposed new pole location have to write this to this Board, and the reasons why they don't believe that that pole should be placed there, as long as it's in the layout of the road. And I would assume that most properties, if it's in the layout of the road, and it doesn't need to come to us, then they would be proposing sticking it in private property, which is a whole other story, but that wouldn't happen, I wouldn't imagine, so. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to talk about a pole location after I just explain the process? Sir, if you want to come to the podium and just quickly touch base on what I just said, maybe?
My name's Michael Matt, I live on Manchester Lane 21, so we know the project that's going on at the bottom of the street. Totally okay with that, a lot of friends and family that work there, I think we all know someone that works with Titleist. As far as the pole locations, exactly, come home, the stakes in front of the house. I was given Eversource's contact, the VP of Engineering. When I reached out to him, he had the director of that project contact me. So he's the designer of that project for the street, he said, for Eversource. The VP was extremely nice, helpful, the designer not so nice, basically laughed at me with everything I had to say, and said that you guys would be making the decision on where they choose to put the poles. Contacted somebody from Titleist that I know, again, very accommodating, willing to work with us. I just don't think it's fair, like you said... willing to work with us. I just don't think it's fair, like you said, to put something dead center in the middle of somebody's property so they have to stare at a pole. You know, I'm more than welcome to open my side yard, put the pole down there. It's nowhere. The guy said, you know, there's no way that my boss is gonna sign off on that. So I'd have to put an anchor here, have to make a right turn. That's just too much work. He's not open to tree work. So any solution that we came up with, we would just laugh at and really didn't appreciate that.
Okay. So you understood what I said, right? Because I'm all, I'm all about you, the resident, first, right? Before we start accommodating other situations when those poles have been in place for decades.
Yep.
Right? So the reality of it is, is they would have to come in front of this board to relocate that pole.
Okay.
As long as it's in the layout of the road, which is pretty much, I tell everybody, for a best guesstimate, wherever the asphalt ends, go in five or six feet and that's the layout of a road. So, and other than that, they'd be intruding on your property and we know that's not happening, right, with most people. And I know when I look out my picture window, I don't want to stare at a telephone pole directly in front of my house either. And I don't, we'll wait and see what happens with whoever's proposing the pole location. They have to come here through a public hearing. So we'll have to wait and see what they have to say to us. But I'd be extremely reluctant to approve something like that that's sitting in the center line of somebody's yard. I don't see any reason why that would need to be done.
Yeah.
So you'd have to give me, you know, and I think this body of real concrete rationale.
Because of the weight of the new line supply down the street, that those poles can no longer be a hundred fifty to two hundred feet apart. They have to be within that. So there's three or four of us now that dead center in the middle of our properties. And I would, again, just not okay with that. So would we be notified, the residents, though?
You do. So abutters do have to be, from each pole location, it would go, I think it's three hundred feet? Is it three hundred?
Abutters would be notified and there would be a public hearing.
Okay. Here with the board.
Here at the board and public, at a public hearing, you have the right to be heard.
Okay. All right.
That's absolutely the process, my friend.
Okay.
And I did go by your house, but I didn't want to start banging on.
Yeah, no.
Because you have two driveways and I seen a Jeep on one side and nothing else. And then somebody else told me about a description of one of your work trucks and I said, well, please get by and we got all the rain and I wasn't comfortable doing that and.
All right. I appreciate it.
So I, I like to speak with people outside, especially if we're talking about things going on inside. I don't like to be that guy to intrude into anybody's home.
And I'm all for everybody involved, Titleist included. If there's a happy medium for everybody involved.
Sure. We could figure out, we could probably figure out a better thing than the center line of your yard.
Exactly.
So we'll do, I know I will and I'm sure, I'm confident that my board will make the right decisions when that time comes, my friend.
All right.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. The only other thing that I want to comment on Verizon poles is, there's been a lot of complaints, like the complaint department, but a lot of complaints, and I've seen it and I don't like it either, is with Verizon. Seeing how they're responsible for over ninety percent of the poles is when they come in, whether it be a car accident that's cracked a pole or a new pole going up, for whatever reason it may be, they sister up against the side of an old pole. Sometimes they're broken poles and they leave that shredded where it's the height of somebody's head and they sister that pole to the new pole and then they leave it there for six or nine months or a year all over. I think that's unacceptable as well.
I agree.
I think that's one of the things. There was a bad.
Down right there, the four corners.
Yeah. There's a bad, there was a bad one on Mendel Road and that pole was very close to the edge of the road. Hathaway Road, I apologize, Hathaway Road. There was one on the corner of Burke and Middle Road a while back. I don't know if that one's still there. It's just, it's just unacceptable business practice, I think. And I think that, you know, we have to get somebody from Verizon in here to have these conversations with them and figure out what's going on.
Absolutely.
That's probably the best solution to this.
Can we issue a cease and desist until we hear from them?
It's a good question.
Sounds like a safety hazard to me.
I view it as that, my friend, right? I mean, God forbid, you have parents that are picking up kids from school buses, right? And they're walking by these things and they leave all that shredded, ripped up, sharp edges. And I'm just like, this is ludicrous. You know, little kids, they're not paying attention. Let's be honest. They're running across the street to their parents or whatever and they get something like that in their head. I'm like, I just, it's, it's just horrible that that's the way they function as a business to leave that there.
We can issue a cease and desist for all new poles and we can call them in for all pole replacements.
It's the other thing. They're putting up a bunch of new poles on North Main Street, right? Taller ones that carry whatever lines. I would, I would assume that these new bigger poles are going in for the solar fields, right? To accommodate solar fields. And they haven't been in front of us for pole hearings. And I know they're only moving it, you know, they put it alongside, so maybe they don't need that. I don't know what that policy looks like. If they have a pole and they put something two feet away and they put the new pole in, but.
If they don't take the old pole out, then it's a new pole and they haven't been here since I've been here.
I would, I mean, we've done it before, right? I mean, the only way you get people's attention is you gotta.
Shut them down.
You gotta pull them back, right? So I would, whatever the mechanism is, if it's Mr. Mabola or whoever, and if they see activity.
Well, you're the permit granting authority. So if the board votes to issue a cease and desist, we can let Verizon know.
I'll, I'll make a motion to issue a cease and desist to Verizon on pole placements. So moved.
No, that would be a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go. Mr. Kelly, can you?
Well, you're have to.
Can you write that letter up, sir? All right. Next, we have Eversource here. I see, I believe, two individuals from Eversource. We got them under electrical and light fixtures. Mr. Anthony, how are you, sir?
Pretty good. How you guys doing?
You jumped up to that podium pretty quick.
Couldn't wait.
Yeah, ready to go. So, you know, it's, it's, I don't know, I really want to talk about, it kind of goes hand and foot of what we just discussed, right? Light, light fixtures, right? So I'm told that when Verizon slash Eversource, just for the sake of the conversation to stop, Anthony, replaces one of these poles, which the ones on North Main Street, there are several of them in place, whether it's you or it's Eversource, just give me a minute to speak and then you can have your time. They're taking down our lamps, which now the town owns, right? Okay? They're taking down our lamps and they're putting up their new pole and then they're leaving and they're contacting the town and saying, hey, your lamp's on the side of the street. And then we, the taxpayers, have to pay the contractor that won the contract to fix the lights and put the lights back up in different circumstances, out of taxation to go put that light fixture back up. I don't see how that works for the taxpayers of Akushnet. So if Verizon or Eversource takes that light fixture down to replace their pole for whatever reason, whether it's supply new power lines to a solar field or whatever the case may be, other than a car accident, because we can get reimbursed from the insurance company from the car accident, which we just talked about a little bit earlier. How do we take that lamp down or Verizon or Eversource takes that lamp down and sits it on the ground, but when we put the new pole up and the new lines up, they can't put the fixture back on the pole and make it light back up again? That's something that I got from an individual that actually does some of this work and I couldn't even believe what I was hearing. And I said, you gotta be kidding me. That's happening? And it's happening. So I don't know where Eversource stands. I do know now that Eversource doesn't own a lot of poles. They own some in Akushnet, but I'm assuming ninety percent of these things are owned by Verizon?
Correct. Yeah. Verizon sets all the poles in the town of Akushnet. If there's Eversource own, there's so many poles, I'm not sure which ones we would own, but the vast majority is Verizon. Ninety, ninety-five percent.
So again, I guess that conversation, who would take down our lamp? Would it be Eversource that pulls it from our, from the old pole and, and puts it down on the ground because they're doing the wiring and Verizon just calls you up and says, hey, we just put a new pole at so-and-so's location and we're all set with our stuff, but you need to move all your stuff now?
Yep. As far as I know, we don't touch the streetlights at all. We just disconnect them. I can run down the whole process. Brian can help me out. He's our account executive.
I guess I can kind of explain the process.
We don't touch the streetlights.
So again, Brian Melo, the account rep for the town of Akushnet. So Eversource, we do not touch the streetlights in the town. The town owns the lights. And obviously, I'm also a town resident, so I kind of have a little bit of background of how the light, the streetlights work in the town. So the town obviously has a contractor that's, that's subbed and has a contract to maintain all these lights. So if we get a pole that's hit or a pole replacement, Verizon goes out, they place the new pole. And just to clarify the ownership, Verizon and, and Eversource have fifty percent ownership of all these poles in the town, in the public way. The difference is, is in the town, Verizon has the set. They maintain the set, the setup for the pole. So once Verizon gets out there, they set the pole. They'll set the pole. As you see, going up Main Street, we've got tons of poles there. So next in line is Eversource. We're the first utility to get there where we remove and transfer all the primaries up top and the secondaries. And what we do is, because the poles are right next to the streetlights, we actually disconnect that streetlight and we connect it back into the new secondaries so that it stays powered up. Then we top the pole off, the old pole, right above that streetlight. Okay? So next is, the next person to, the next utility or next entity to get out there is the town where the DPW gets notified. They let the contractor know, contractor was out there, removes the light, places on to the new, to the new pole. How these lights are getting removed physically and placed at the bottom of the pole, I don't know who's doing it. We're, as a liability, we, as Eversource, can't touch those lights. We don't own them. So I don't know if maybe the DPW's going out there at the same time. I can't answer that.
Yeah. So the DPW don't touch it. Maybe they're responsible for making a contact to the contractor. So you're saying, the light stays on, you move all your stuff over and then you contact DPW saying the streetlight needs to be moved from one pole to the other. But it's, neither here or there, maybe it's just some people are confused and maybe I'm a little confused on the information, but I've seen it before. My lamp's sitting on the ground. From a hit, from a hit, though.
From a hit.
It still doesn't make much sense if the pole is being replaced by Verizon or you, doesn't really matter. Why would we be paying to transfer our lamp from one pole to another when the pole was perfectly fine? Should we, maybe the conversation comes for this board is maybe, well, if we find out why new poles are being put in and if it is an upgrade because of a solar field, maybe we get reimbursed from the solar field?
So the, the only way that a pole will be upgraded is, it's being upgraded for, let's say, the solar fields. You know, we have a standard where we have to upgrade the poles to a taller pole. It could be a pole that Verizon has marked as degraded. So we gotta go out and, well, they go out, they replace it.
Sure.
It could be for a new job that a resident is asking for a new service, a new underground service to that pole. We have to upgrade it to a standard. Those are the only reasons why we would be replacing any of these poles. You know, I could see maybe a case where a pole gets hit by a car and the thing, you know, the pole's all twisted and, you know, maybe Verizon or it might be even us that we're out there that we might set the lamp on the, on the ground. I know that personally, me being as a resident, I get notified every time there's a pole hit in, in an accident in the, in the town. I'm usually there with, with the, the troubleman in the police department. So I have not seen Eversource or Verizon replacing any of these or removing any of the streetlights. Not to say that it's, it doesn't happen once in a while for that example that I just said, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As it's a liability.
That's fine. I just don't think that it's fair for the taxpayer to be paying when Verizon's putting new poles. And I don't care, you know, it's a solar company and that's why the poles are being upgraded. Maybe we have to have that conversation and get reimbursed by the solar company, you know?
But this should not be, so, so the way that I understand this, the lighting contractor with the town has a fixed price and that's part of the, of their contract to respond for these types of car accidents, anytime a streetlight needs to be transferred. So I don't believe that this, there is an extra cost by this contractor for that. I could be wrong, but that's the way that I understood the contract was.
Yeah. I guess we'll have to find that contract and look at that contract, because I always led to believe the other way around.
Yeah. I always like to believe that it's each individual life we have to pay.
For a transfer.
For a transfer.
So it's like, it was described to me as if Eversource is already there, why wouldn't you just give them, you know, fifty bucks to transfer the lamp instead of calling them, the contractor, out and spending two hundred and two hundred and fifty to transfer that lamp? And I was like, it kind of, he's just, you're not, it's not, like if it's a car accident, we can back bill, we can, the PD can notify ours and we can put in a claim against the person that hit the pole and put it on their insurance and we can get reimbursed for the cost. I get that. But you're setting thirty poles, forty, fifty poles down Main Street to go to a solar field and you got fifteen out of those thirty of the other one with a lamp on it. You know, what are we doing?
It comes down to a liability.
It's the same for Comcast or if there's fire or emergency signals on those poles, we don't touch that either because it's a, we don't own that equipment. So we don't, we don't touch the equipment that we don't own.
That's fine. Because after the light fixture is transferred over, the next utility generally is the town if there's fiber or it could be Comcast. So again, the town is responsible for cutting the pole just below that, that light for the next utility to take those wires and transfer them. And it just keeps going right down the line until Verizon, Verizon's the last one. They go there, they remove their, their lines and they remove the pole. That's the sequence of operation.
If there's an existing pole there and they're putting a pole next to it, then in my mind, it's a new pole set and they have to come here for a permit.
So if you look at the rights, the way that the rights are given for all these poles, there's a three-foot radius that gives rights to move that pole. Because if, if that was the case, I mean, there would be such a holdup on replacing poles for Verizon. But if you look at the way the rights are written, we do have a, Verizon has a three-foot radius that they can, if you look at all these poles, they're literally right next to each other. Because if they were to move them over, let's say, five feet, that's considered a new pole. Now they're gonna come.
I said that earlier. They must have something that they can be within a certain range of where the existing pole is where we call that off, right?
Because I know all the other towns that Eversource does the set. That's how the rights are written. You have a three-foot radius.
From who?
From the town.
So we've granted them a three-foot radius.
That's part of the rights.
And so from now on, we could restrict that, right?
That's up to the town's discretion.
Well, I don't know. So, so I, I said, you know, and I had a conversation earlier on with Mr. Kelly and I said, the only thing I can think of is why they haven't come in is because they must have a parameter that they, they can work within where it doesn't trigger a new pole hearing and a new set, right? As a new set, new location. And you just said it right out of your mouth. That's exactly what it is. They basically have a foot now either side that they can go to stay within their three-foot range. They can kick off, right?
And generally, they, they tend to put that pole right back in the same spot because it's a lot easier. But if there's a lot of equipment on a pole, that's when they have to set the new pole next to it.
And are they responsible then for taking the old pole out of all the, instead of having all the dual poles?
Well, you see a lot of dual poles is because all the other utilities are still waiting to move over to the next one.
Yeah, but that can't be a six-month, nine-month period. I mean, Selectmen One, I just pointed this one out. I don't know how long ago that one was hit out front over here, but I mean, we know some poles, I know some poles have sat stagnant, sisted up for well over six months. I don't want to exaggerate the case, but nothing less than six months. There's no way somebody should be allowed that big window to let a pole sit sisted up. Again, it's a safety thing. That gentleman right there in the front row said it. It's, it becomes a safety issue and I, and I, I agree a hundred percent. It is a safety issue. Neither here or there, I don't care if that pole's sitting in the woods, it's still enough, is it for a bicyclist, a motorcyclist, if something bad happens and they go flying into that again? Again, it's just a, it's, it's just not a good thing. It's a safety. Mr. Dake, can you have your hand up?
Mr. Chairman, typically in any joint agreement, which I think this gentleman's referring to, the last party off is responsible for removing the pole. So typically when, you know, we set in Akushnet, they may set in for Haven, I don't know what the geographical areas are. That's to eliminate two crews going out to set a pole in every town. And in Akushnet, Verizon sets, they will bill Eversource fifty percent of the cost of that pole. When we set, we notify Eversource, they transfer a deposit. When we set, we notify Eversource, they transfer at the top of the pole, as he said. Then we work our way down ideally. You know, Comcast, or fire alarm, if that's the case, municipalities. But the last party off that pole is responsible for removing it. So you need to be careful when you send a notice to someone. We, I think we should send someone out to see who's left on the pole. Because if Verizon is transferred and Comcast hasn't, or Eversource hasn't, and that's a rare case, I agree, that's who's responsible to get it done before the pole is removed.
Really? So that's interesting. So if Comcast, which you would think Comcast has the ability to pull a pole on a pole away...
Which they wouldn't.
Huh?
They wouldn't, they don't have that responsibility.
We'll bill them.
Ah.
But it may be held up because Comcast hasn't done their transfer.
Correct, I get it.
You can't remove the pole if this...
Verizon wouldn't even know.
Yeah, well, you know, it's, this has been, I guess, a good working knowledge for the board, I think for the public, to understand the process. Mr. Dakin, thank you very much for that input, I think that's pertinent information. So I guess, you know, it's more of a, I guess there's only two people left, Verizon and Comcast, right? To have that dialogue with and say that, you know, six months is way too long and we're not gonna accept that as a, put in a policy. Mr. Kelly?
If you remember, the poles, plural, that were attached to the tree that we had to take down, it took us 18 months to get anybody to pay attention to those.
So we can, we've put a hold on Verizon doing sets and changing our poles, so they're gonna be forced to come in and talk to us, and we can have that conversation with them as well. But I don't have anything else for Eversource at this point. I appreciate you both, you gentlemen, coming in and explaining to the board, and most importantly to the public, the process. I think that's, it's an important informational thing. You know, we could do it in the back room, but again, it's, I think it's a great thing for the public to be able to view this, and everybody would have a better understanding of what's going on when they see these kind of things and understand. It's not us, the town, holding things up, it may not be Verizon, Eversource, but it's a combination of different things. So I appreciate the education and your folks' time for coming in. I don't know if you two gentlemen have anything else?
And as the town rep, you know, I live in the town, so you guys know how to get ahold of me, any questions you may have, feel free, I can answer most of the projects I know about on the town.
Thank you, sir.
Don't announce your address.
Say, can you give me a phone number on that? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a citizens' interest forum, Nancy Viveras. She's looking to be appointed to both Historical Commission and the Beautification Committee. And if you look at the back, we have a vacancy on Historical, we have one vacancy on Beautification. Looking for a motion to appoint Nancy Viveras to the Historical Commission and the Beautification Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. A lot of people have stepped up to the plate. They've knocked this vacancy list down quite a bit.
There's a whole bunch.
Over the last year or so, so great work. Thank you to all you folks in the community. Forty-eight Gillette Street, this is back on again, there's some things about the rider, and Mr. Kelly's been through this with Ms. Kosker, and the deed has been recorded, but without kind of a blank one, we don't have copies of that, but I've seen it. Mr. Kelly?
We were contacted late today by the attorney. Sidney sent the original document that's for him to cite off of, and we sent the document that was deficient in the sites back to him, and we asked him to go through it and put the correct sites and the correct, filling in the correct areas, including the percentage, and show us that it's recorded before we'll sign the document for the state.
Very, very good, thank you for taking care of that. Sidney, thank you very much for taking care of that. Mr. Kelly, I know it's been an ongoing back and forth, we have a stack of file this big on everything, and back and forth with Kelly Kosker, our assessor, and thank you for her work on this as well, but it's just, you know, after seeing all of that, I don't know how people get away with recording deeds with blank, pretty much blanks everywhere, and somehow that was recorded, and none of the pertinent information that I called out originally about the deed rider was addressed there. And so everybody knows at home, the complication is, is that's considered affordable housing stock in the town of Akushnet, and the Board of Selectmen was reluctant to lose any of our affordable housing stock, because we're at a low percentage already. And that's what the hangup was, and was kind of happy that we held things up to make sure that it's, you know, we do right by the folks, and most importantly, protected the homeowner via the deed recording. That was, I believe, misproperly recorded. So Mr. Kelly, as soon as that, for me, I don't want to hold this homeowner up, as soon as that comes in, if you can let me know, and we can get back to work on that.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have a review of the warrant. Mr. Kelly will give us just a quick hit on all the articles, if you don't mind, Mr. Kelly, this is only a draft for the board to look through, but that's all that is, will be finalized, and I believe Mr. Kelly will finalize the warrant on October 10th, I believe it will be.
Well, that's when the board will approve it.
Do a final...
I'll have it to the board long before that.
A final approval after, there's some things that need to happen, there's certain things with the planning board, there's...
And it's also, we need, as of October 1st, we get an investment report, and that impacts on being able to give the board proper figures on the stabilization accounts, the OPEV accounts, et cetera.
Excellent. So if you just want to go through the articles and touch briefly on what they are, so everybody in TV land knows?
Article 1 is a traditional article, it's presented to settle prior bills that were received and are processed after the fiscal year. The Finance Department sent this down to us, it's in the amount of $5,089. The second article is an article that was required because the Commonwealth's General Appropriation Act, their budget was passed in August, it was late this year. And so originally, we had to base some of our figures off of our staff estimates. And the difference between the estimates and the final figures were $98,309. And what we did was, we appropriated in this, or restructured in this, amounts that totaled $79,750 in this article, and some of it was just reassigning numbers to various departments. The group insurance and health insurance was increased because of, we were expecting folks to join, because now we're with Mass Strategic Health Group, and it's a better deal than it was before, especially some of our retirees. And the town accountant's office, we provided for actuarial services, so we could be accurate with our OPEV accounts.
Okay, the only comment I want to make on Article 2 is if there's, it says restructure clerical staff, I just want to make sure that everybody understands, including you, if there's, there's obviously a union involved in this, I want to make sure that we have approval from the union, and also any employee that's being impacted by that.
Correct.
So if that's not done, we don't want to create any headaches with employees. So it's got to be done through with the union and the employees, everybody needs to be in agreement about the restructure of this flipping things around. I understand exactly what's going on, I just want to make sure that we don't have any more disruptions in employees.
The union's been notified on where appropriate, and the union will meet with management and the employees.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Article 3 is the acceptance of a provision of the Omnibus Municipal Reform Act that allows us to make sure that the certification timeframe of new growth corresponds to the town's fiscal year, not the town, not the calendar year. This has been accepted by over two-thirds of the Commonwealth's municipalities already.
Very good.
Article 4 is to rescind the borrowing authority for the EMS ambulance that was authorized in the spring town meeting. We did that because in Article 5, we're purchasing it with free cash.
Correct, so Article 4 is rescinding the borrowing for the $610 that the townspeople approved at the last town meeting, and then what we're doing in return is, we're gonna buy it outright cash, from free cash, so that's all that is, it's just not doing a borrowing.
No. And if you remember, we did the borrowing so we could order the ambulance and be in the queue to get it soon.
Correct, and once we got a VIN number, we could assign it to it and all that stuff, right?
Right.
Very good.
Also in Article 5 is appropriation for the fire chief's vehicle. He's either gonna purchase a Dodge, Durango, or Chevrolet Tahoe off of the list, state list, that'll be from free cash. In addition, I'm proposing that the Chevrolet Bolt's lease closeout come out of free cash. Originally, we were gonna do it out of the reserve account, the Finance Committee looked at that and didn't want to do it out of the reserve account. That's in, Mr. Chairman, it's in...
Oh, your new draft?
Yep.
Okay, I never look at new things, I look at old things when I do my homework.
And then it's COA Chrysler Voyager, that is the 20% that we have, as far as the grant, the Commonwealth is paying 80% of that, and that's for a new van for the COA.
Excellent.
Article 6 is to appropriate $80,000 from free cash, but it's actually from the opioid settlement, the opioid settlement money goes into free cash, and $12,000 from the ambulance reserve fund. This is to purchase cardiac monitors. The cardiac monitors, the tool that we're purchasing, replaced to, that their current lifespan is 10 years, and they were bought in the year 2013. So...
Right on time.
We're getting close to the line there.
It's fine, it's basically, it's basically only $12,000, because as you, as you alluded to, the $80,000 came in the opioid settlement, and you said something a few meetings ago under the Town Administrator's Report, that whatever the free cash was, has been exponentially inflated because of a number of different reasons, and this is one of that, inflation of free cash. So let's not all assume that this is like every year.
No, it's not an annual...
Correct, this is one of the examples of why free cash was higher this year, is that 80 grand went into free cash.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lona?
While we're on the subject of AEDs, something that's really, I'm passionate about, and as you recall, we have the Fabian family in here, and made donations to the town to have handheld portable AED defibrillators at Pole Park. I'm not sure what we have at our own town buildings, right? And so I would ask the Town Administrator to work with the Fire Chief to get an inventory of what we have here at Town Hall, Council on Aging, especially the DPW, right? Like, we've got Police Department to make sure that we have these types of apparatus in public buildings, and, you know, that's, now would be the time to go for money for that. So I just ask, while we're on that subject, that we look into that.
Okay, that's a good point. I think it's a really good point, for us to look at inventory of where these are located. Thank you, Mr. Lona, that's a great point.
And whatever we have, what the, where they are in their lifespan.
Exactly. So we can, we can decide on, we have some other free cash things of going into stabilization, but we, under Mr. Lona's recommendation, I think if we find out, we might need one or two more of these, we just stop manipulating around a little bit, we have that flexibility as the board to do that.
Correct.
So we'll figure that out.
There's still a free cash.
Sure. Yep.
Yep. Number 7 is transferring $150,000 of free cash into the Capital Expense Stabilization Fund. And Article 8 is transferring $200,000 into the OPEV Trust Fund. I'll have final figures for the board when we get the report from our investments on September 30th. We have also, as far as the OPEV Trust Fund, we are, other than $25,000 that PRIM holds for 60 days, the first week in October, we're transferring from PRIM to PARZ. The board, it was at the board's direction that we do this, because of the return rate we get from PRIM was so negligible, actually costs the town money, and PARZ is a considerably better manager. Article 10 is to transfer $75,000 from the Community Preservation Act's undesignated fund balance as a supplemental appropriation to Article 13 of November 14th, 2020 Fall Special Town Meeting concerning the, its supplements, the funds needed to continue with weed remediation and other improvements of the Lake Street Recreation Area.
Did you jump over Article 9?
Yes.
Did I? I'm sorry. Oh, Article 9 is to see if the town will vote to transfer from the golf course retained earnings $250,000 for the purpose of various capital repairs, including irrigation system repairs, car pass repairs, replacement of equipment and expenditures. This was approved by the, to be approved by the Golf Management Committee and the Board of Selectmen. It was proposed by the Golf Committee, and submit it as one of their articles.
So I've run some, some different scenarios with the golf course, because I've seen that number, and it's a very large number. From fiscal year 2020 to fiscal year 2023, the Golf Enterprises spent $348,681 in reserves from articles, plus an additional $216,500. Which means, in three years, from the reserves, that they carry $100,000 from the reserve in their budget, okay? And they have those appropriations as well. So they, in three years, they've burned, the cash burn rate over three years is $565,181. It comes out to $188,393 a year. They got $100,000 in the reserve fund, they still have a remaining balance from the special town meeting, October 22nd, October 2022, I apologize, they appropriated $300,000, and they still have left to spend $181,319 from the October Special Town Meeting. So if they're carrying $100,000 in their reserve, like they do every year in their budget, they still have remaining $181 from a 319 from an article, that's basically giving them $281,000 of flexibility to spend, they're asking for another $250,000, which puts them over another half a million dollars. At their burn rate of $188,000 plus a year, I can't... I can't even fathom why we would need an article for 250,000 dollars from that with all this other money that's floating out there. So I'm very objective to this article. You know, I'd like to see a breakdown of the cost analysis based on what they put in here, but they have $181,000 sitting in an old article. They have a decent piggy bank called their reserve fund, but clearly their cash burn rate is, is pretty high. It's almost $200,000 above and beyond what their regular budget is. I have a massive problem with that, seeing how they have maybe 1.3, 1.4. We'll figure that number out once we get from the state of their actual reserve. But we're in desperate need of a clubhouse. And at this burn rate, I don't understand where we're going with, you know, all this, the cash burn rate that they have. The clubhouse is falling apart. Without a clubhouse, we don't have a golf course. So I think there's going to be a broader discussion with this board of looking at when are we going to do something and move on? A replacement of what they call a clubhouse now. Yeah, it's been great for 20-something years, but the building's falling apart. Without the building, you don't have an operation. So, you know, I'm looking at this a little bit differently. Spend, 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 spend. I get there's things that they need to spend on, and I appreciate all the hard work the Golf Committee has done and the employees of the golf course. But at some point, we need to pull out the reins in and take a look at the bigger picture and say, you know, we need to do X, Y, and Z first. And I, and I think it all falls hand and foot. You build a new clubhouse, you increase revenues dramatically off that clubhouse. So I just think there's a better way to set ourselves up for success at the golf courses.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We asked the Golf Committee to do a business plan, right? They hired a consultant. I haven't seen it. I don't know if the board has seen it. I don't know if it's in the draft phase or it's been officially accepted. I think before we consider anything, we want to, let's go back to the source of truth. Let's see what the business plan, what that plan says.
I agree.
So maybe we get them, get the Golf Course Committee in here.
Would you light them in for the next meeting?
I don't, unless they can, yeah, I would. I mean, they have to be someday. You can't just throw money and say, this is what we want, and then we don't. We always had people come in and say, this is what we want the money for. Give us a description. Give the people at home a description. Let everybody know what the money's being spent on. So when you go to town meeting, it's not a guessing game. And people are getting up to their podium and asking questions that could be resolved and answered here where it's supposed to be done. How do we make an educated guess at what we're doing? From, we're the business leaders of the community, right? So how do we make those educated guesses? We don't just do it based on somebody's wants. It's what we, the Board of Selectmen, believe is in the best interest of moving this town forward. That's the way we've always operated, and I believe that's the best way for the town to move forward, is for this board to understand the operations, what's going on at the operations, give our input, and tell the Golf Committee, you know what, here's the deal. I know what I know at that golf club, and I know golf, but I've been down here to talk to my employees, and I've seen what's unacceptable to me as far as that, that clubhouse goes. So when's that conversation going to be had? I think Mr. Lona is spot on. They brought in professionals. I think they came from Florida, whatever they've been. I think that's, that's where we need to have that conversation and start looking at that document, quite honestly.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Hi. Your meeting? The town meeting today?
Town meeting, no.
No.
Which meeting is it? Forward Appeals?
Forward Appeals, yes.
Sorry.
Yes, Monday is.
It's 6:30.
Okay, we're going to sit.
What time does it say on the agenda to sell? Couple lines?
6:30.
All right, so we got to get moving.
All right, we got to get moving.
This is the Board of Selectmen. Thank you for coming in. This is the Board of, I wasn't aware of another meeting, but thank you very much.
I think I would see you, right, shiny face.
You can just, you can just sit right there because apparently that's where it's kicking off. So, so that's that.
So from now on, can we book meetings?
Mr. Chairman.
After I select these meetings, so we can keep these going, right?
Mr. Chairman. Just what, senior staff has another concern on this in that there was an expectation that was given to senior staff that town staff would be doing a bunch of this work. And I'm not sure we have sufficient staff to do all of this in-house.
I, I just explain how much money that they really have at their disposal, right? The 181, let's call it 180. The 100 in the reserve, that's 280. They're asking for 250. There's no, I see no need for the article unless somebody else says, well, we already have intentions of spending that, plus the 250, and we want to blow over half a million dollars, which I'm not acceptable to either. So we could have that dialogue with the Golf Committee. Mr. Lona is spot on, I believe, with the proposal that we had, you know, paid whatever amount of money it was to get the pros from. And that came in originally when we bought, isn't that what it was, Mr. Lona?
Yeah.
So to get him in here and figure out and tell us what we need to do to better the operations, let's do that and figure it out, move forward.
All right.
So Article 10, you already did.
Article 11.
Article 11.
That's, the state changed.
To three years, and we want to go back to two years. So we're going to put in our own bylaws for two years.
Correct.
Thank you.
Then we have a new part of the zoning bylaw that allows over 55 development. And you can see in this draft, I put together a checklist of all of the appropriate things, track size with sewer and water, track size, no sewer and water, frontage, 30 units or less, frontage 30 units or more, housing unit limit, dwelling limit, et cetera, bedroom limit. The board can review that. That's new in what I did this afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, boss. I just want to say this, though, on that, on this issue of over 55. I look at it, there's two things I think really important to understand. One, we don't do something, I think we're vulnerable to 40B, right? So what we're trying to do is put guidelines, rules of the road that people can understand. And I think probably the most important thing is there are two options to consider. One, by right, which is by, you do that, you lose all control over the process. That's not what we're looking at. We're looking at a special permit that it must go through the planning board, and there'll be checks and balances to modify or make sure whatever is proposed fits within.
Correct.
You know, the zone of the town, right? So if it's in the more dense populated part of town, it'll look a certain way, right? I would argue that if we had something like this in place that developers could understand, instead of having a solar array development at Meadowbrook.
Driving range?
Driving range in this middle of town, we might have had a nice over 55 community there. So we missed the boat on that one. We can't repeat the mistakes of the past, and I think this is a good start.
I agree. Gee, I know the planning board's got something set up for October 5th, the public hearing. Obviously, it's important to have their input on this bylaw. I'm hopeful that they can get this thing over the finish line. Hopeful. I know there's been some talk back and forth amongst some of their members in disagreement of, you know, what's profitable for developers and everything else. I will say this. I think the one that's been modified here is a lot less stringent than the Rochester. That's what has been duplicated off, is the town of Rochester. So when somebody makes that claim that it's not profitable for a developer, I can't see how because Rochester's developed 55 and all the housing in their town. So this is a little bit more lax. So just saying that, I hope the planning board can get through this and do what they need to do. If they have changes, make the changes and try to get it back to the board where we can all agree on it, without being crazy.
Next article is the Stormwater Bylaw Article. That one is to make sure we're in compliance with Mass PEP and it's the updates of the Stormwater Bylaw.
Very good.
The next article is to amend the sewer bylaw. We're waiting for the wording from our attorney who specializes in sewer. Mr. Chairman, you and I are going to meet with him tomorrow, so we'll see what he has to offer.
Okay, boss.
Article 15 is to authorize the Board of Selectmen under MGL Chapter 30b, Section 16, and Chapter 40, Section 15, to declare Russell Memorial Library available for disposition and conveyance and to identify any reuse restrictions, if any, and/or minimal purchase amount. This is the RFP process that allows you to keep control versus a straight-out auction and allows you to make sure that the historical considerations and reuse restrictions are in place.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. I got a text earlier today from Senator Montigny's office that we received a $25,000 economic development grant for the feasibility study for the memorial library, which we could probably use to help develop the RFP and figure out what the best plan is. So.
Excellent.
We'll be able to do that.
Thanks for that, okay.
Out of pocket.
All right. Moving along, we have five minutes.
Article 16 is similarly giving the board authorization under the RFP process to declare selected town-owned parcels of under 20,000 square feet available for disposition, et cetera, et cetera, under the same chapters. It will enable the Board of Selectmen to identify any reuse restrictions, proposal submission requirements, and terms and conditions of sale. It also involves notice to abutting property owners, multiple advertisements, and public evaluation of the proposals. So it will enable abutters to be able to, for very small pieces, postage stamps to be contiguous, property owners will be able to, with the board, under the RFP process, purchase those properties.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, just to give you, I have to, a meeting with Jamie this Friday to review the reuse restrictions and go over some guidelines for size of property. So we'll button that up as soon as possible.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Aingley.
Article 17 is approve and fund an MOA, amending the three-year collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI. The appropriation is 9,926,000. That will come out of the difference with the, for the money, the state aid. Primarily, it's to, the board has been in discussion about this a number of times. The library and the dispatchers, their contract does not, their means of operation do not jive with the generic contract because one is a 24/7 operation and the other one operates on Saturdays. In addition, there were some issues with a title that I dealt with the union on, one of the job titles. And they've suggested, and I've going to recommend to the board, the title change. Other than that, Article 18 and 19 are placeholders if we finish our collective bargaining negotiations with the unions that don't have contracts right now. And Article 20 is the citizens petition that a notorious withdrawal came in, but under state law, we still have to put it in the warrant.
Okay, very good. Town Administrator's report, you had that opportunity already. Selectmen's announcements, anybody?
Nope.
Nothing? Motion to adjourn? Oh, wait a minute, hold on a second, hold on a second. I apologize.
Executive session. We can have it up there.
I got you. I'm just rushing because all the people are here, and they need the room. Is there a motion to go into executive session on the General Law, Chapter 30a, subsection 21b3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation pending litigation? If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, the board will not return to public session. So, second. All those in favor?
I'll call both.
I'm getting there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call both, Mr. Aingley?
Yes.
Mr. Lona?
Yes.
And I am, yes. We are now in executive session.